Are we ready?
We don't want to go there.
Jerry?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, please show us the pledge of allegiance.
Got it.
Over here.
It's programmed.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Of adoption of the agenda.
We'd like to do it in memory of one of our most prominent business people who just died.
Okay.
William Spencer.
Adoption in memory of... Close in memory of William Spencer.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
One favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, attorney, any report out from the closed session?
Council made in... Council made in closed session to discuss one case of potential litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. Direction was given, no action was taken. There was also a closed session for a conference with labor negotiators, all bargaining units. Again, direction was given, no action was taken.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda as approved is oral communications number one. And I have three slips. First, there's a Corinne Rizley.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city staff, members of the community. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I just have a couple of brief announcements from the library. I'm the manager of the Brisbane Library. The first one is that after...
Again, here. Is this a mic on?
Maybe just pull it a little bit closer to you, Corinne. There you go.
Right.
Is this better? Oh, yeah.
Much better.
Okay.
Better?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks.
After assessing the May 2013 Brisbane Library Open Hours Community Survey, reviewing current Brisbane Library usage patterns and analyzing open hours of neighboring libraries, we've been able to approve updated library open hours. The new hours reflect majority community input as reflected in the survey. And the majority of people who gave us input indicated that they'd like to see an increase. Actually, they would like to see some morning hours since we have not been able to offer any, and they would also like to see additional weekend hours. So we're able to add one hour on Saturday and six hours of morning service Monday through Wednesday. So the new hours are Monday through Wednesday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Thursday and Friday, 12:00 to 5:00, and Saturday, 11:00 to 5:00. So we're looking forward to serving more people at the library during our new open hours, and I welcome feedback as we go along and try out the new hours. The second thing I'm really delighted to announce is that in less than three weeks, we're going to be starting Tricycle Music Fest, which is countywide. It's a partnership with San Francisco Public Library. We're calling it the biggest little music fest in the West, and it's for families. We're having the open end here in Brisbane. Actually, we're the only jurisdiction in the county to have two concerts, so we feel really lucky. The first one is September 8th with The Not-Itz. That's going to be at Mission Blue with Bookmobile. And the entire series raises awareness about literacy and the importance of music and early learning. And at each of the concerts here in Brisbane, we're going to be celebrating a special summer reading winner. So we gave out the prizes this past weekend, and so one child in the community is going to be a VIP, and we'll have a song dedicated to him or her, and receive some special gifts and hang out with artists who they're Grammy nominated and pretty acclaimed.
That's pretty nice.
And at the second concert, we're going to be raffling off a tricycle for member of the community, so we're looking forward to that as well. And so the second one is on October 19th at the Brisbane Library, and that will be with the pop-ups. So we're delighted to be able to offer that.
Okay, so the first one is September 8th?
That's right, yes.
Which day of the week is that?
That is on Sunday.
Sunday, and what time?
That one will be at 11:00 a.m.
11:00 a.m., Sunday, September 8th.
Yes. And then the pop-ups will be Saturday, October 19th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay. So is the... Why are we getting two? I mean, we're very happy about that, but how'd that happen?
Well, I was hoping to organize it for the county, and we're working with San Francisco. And of course, Brisbane is quite close to San Francisco, so as we were coordinating shows, we were able to have two. And it was nice to serve the Mission Blue area as well as the library area as well. So we hope to do some effective connection with people in different parts of town that maybe don't always visit us currently.
Okay, that's great. Yeah.
Yeah, and I do have one question, Mr. Mayor. So that's great that we have the extra library hours. I was wondering how you were able to manage that in your budget to get the extra hours?
Well, they're not extra, so what we did is we tweaked them.
Okay.
So we shifted the hours around, and so that's where studying current usage came in handy because we were able to look at when people were using the library the least and kind of make the reductions there.
Okay, so no additional hours, just a reconfiguration of the hours of operation?
That's right. That's...
Okay. Hopefully, we can get more hours. That would be nice.
No, I wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Do you follow Brisbane?
I do.
Yeah, and you noticed it was an item of discussion there, a change in hours.
Yes. We're, you know, we would like to continue to monitor the hours and see if they're suiting the needs of the community. This does reflect the input that we received when we ran the survey, and it reflects the usage that we see now.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Michelle, about garbage.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I am increasingly appalled at the amount of garbage in Brisbane. Everywhere, on the streets and up and down Main Street and along Bay Shore and along Tunnel and along Beatty and along the freeway and even along Lagoon and everywhere. And it just seems, I mean, we really miss John Kilter, and the garbage is piling up, and I am just appalled. And I would like the council to have a citywide anti-garbage initiative and awareness campaign and go out and, you know, have us pick up the garbage and get our partners to go out and pick up their garbage because a lot blows from Recology and a lot blows from the freeway, and it's plastic bags and cups and just trash. And even on trash days, there's trash left in the streets after pickup by South San Francisco scavengers. And maybe because it hasn't rained for a while, so it's not draining down into the bay through the storm drain system, it's just really despicable. And I've mentioned it before, and now I really want the city council to take action on it, full-force action, because our town is looking like a garbage dump. And I'm sorry, that kind of really bothers me a lot after our history with the garbage dump, that we should have garbage on Tunnel and garbage everywhere, on Lagoon Way and all around Recology and all around areas, you know, as you get onto the freeway, as you get off the freeway, along Old Bay Shore. I mean, just open your eyes and start looking, and you will see how much garbage there is. And now that I'm aware of it and sensitized to it, I see it everywhere. So I'd really like us to take action on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ask the city manager. I know we've been doing some things in that realm, in some parts of town, anyway.
Yeah, well, first of all, I would share Michelle's observation. I've been kind of noticing it around town myself. We have had some discussions on a staff level because of requirements that we are now going to be having to meet in terms of the regional water quality permit. Particularly, the concern there is the trash that gets into the waterways. So I think, you know, we've got the opportunity of our franchises coming up on our garbage or waste collection, and I think we're investigating some practices that are happening in other communities that we may want to negotiate into these franchise agreements. On a small note on this, I had a conversation with Recology at the end of last week, and I actually noticed this afternoon that they had one of their workers out actually collecting and collecting garbage up by their site this afternoon. But in terms of the entire town, Bay Shore Boulevard, out at Sierra Point, you know, it's... I'm not sure what's happened in the last six months or a year, but I certainly have noticed it, and I don't know that we have the answers right now, but I'd certainly share in the observation, and I think we want to definitely try to address this in our new franchise agreements. And there may be some other community-wide sorts of efforts that we want to try to do also.
Okay. Yeah, well, we'll look into what we can do to improve the situation.
I mean, street sweeping deals with some aspect of it.
Right.
But what I've seen a lot, and I'm sure Michelle's probably seen it too, is just people who are just dumping garbage.
Right.
And, you know, for whatever reasons they have to justify that in their minds to do so. And then we have some wind-blown garbage that's coming from, you know, probably from town, also from Recology's operation at the north end of town. We're dealing with a variety of different issues.
Right.
And of course, we've been dealing with tunnel damage for a number of years.
A long time.
I think we may actually be able to get a solution there with Recology once we get the franchise agreement in place with them. But, you know, it's definitely something I've noticed, and I don't like it. It doesn't look good. It doesn't represent our town the way we want it to be represented.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I've noticed a lot of garbage when I've been out driving and I... or walking, and I see it, and it's not just the city, it's not just Recology. It's people who are not paying attention and doing their good citizenship to a major degree, that people think it's okay just to throw stuff out and just to leave it for others. And I think it's something that perhaps we can get together with in our... in the Luminary or in the Star and put it on our website, sort of like the Don't Trash California campaign that the state of California has been running, and do it on a local level because it does come down to all of us locally doing a little bit to help and complaining or calling somebody out when they're not doing their part. So I don't think it's just the city's responsibility. I think it's the entire community's responsibility to work on this, and if we can, as a city, get something together, that would be good.
I agree, because a lot of it's just ignorance, you know, and just haphazard ways that, you know, you think you had learned by the time you're three years old, but that's not being taught in many households, so.
Yeah.
I have a question for staff.
Sure.
So Clay, so I'm glad that you saw someone from Recology, you know, cleaning up out there. You know, I take Beatty to 101, and because of, you know, just, you know, dealing with the, I think the dumpster is right at that crucial intersection, you know, you become more aware of people dumping, and then, you know, then you're driving by and you're just more aware. That particular area around Recology does have a tremendous amount of litter. And I know that, you know, we're eventually, we'll have a franchise agreement with Recology, but that doesn't mean that we can't be in contact with them now and start to implement some kind of policy to keep their area around their facility a little bit cleaner.
I agree.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe perhaps if you could refer back to the council at our next meeting, you know, with... in regards to what they're willing to do, that'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, good. All right, thank you, Michelle. We do share your concern. Okay, Jamie Dunn.
Evening, council members, Mr. Mayor, and citizens. Jamie Dunn, Tularay Street, Brisbane resident. And I've been thinking lately about the number of people in Brisbane who put out themselves to do the extra work, take an extra step, show up at council meetings, show up at the ER meetings, show up at subcommittee meetings, and do everything they can to participate in the public process. It's a really unique city that we have because so many people do these things. And the city has gone a little bit of an extra mile by televising these meetings, which really makes a big difference to people who can't get here for one reason or another, but they can get the information from the television sometimes. The last week, I tried to watch a meeting, and it wasn't the council meeting. I knew a couple of people who were on the committee, and I knew that they were sitting up here, but they looked about this big, and the lighting was so dark that some of them were just almost shaded out completely. And it was a night that people were working later here, so I called the city, and I said, could somebody go down and ask them to turn on the lights so that people watching this can see who's speaking? Because it does make a difference if you hear speaking, but you can't figure out who's saying what, and then it begins to be inaudible. I can't hear it, I don't know what's being really said. And I asked this once before. I said, you know, the commission meetings, the committee meetings and so forth are televised in a different way, and when they say, well, it's a money issue. I think it's a money issue that we ought to conquer, and I think it's a money issue we can't. It's like saying, we need a car. We're going to buy a car. We don't have enough money, let's buy half a car. We have half a car right now, and we can't drive it anywhere because there's so many people that only see this meeting. And there are so many meetings going on that are of importance. The DER meetings that are going on right now are critical to this whole community, and we're going to expect people to take a stand, make a vote, give an opinion, but they really don't know what's going on. And it almost looks as if there'd be a reason why we didn't want them to know, and there's sort of... If you look at the meetings that are really recorded, you have to look back many, many months before you see the recordings of several of these meetings, before you can get one. There have been meetings that actually have been supposedly recorded, but they don't... they're not heard over the television. First of all, you can't see the people. Second of all, you can't hear the people, or if you do hear them or if you... it's not recorded, you come in and you have to ask for a recording of that particular meeting. And I think this half a car business is baloney. It's about time we stop saying we don't have the money. I mean, we could say that about every single thing that comes up. We don't have enough money, we don't have enough money. But we have people that could be very easily throwing up their hands and saying, the heck with it, and going out on a picnic with their family, going to a movie, going out to dinner, you know? But instead, they're trekking down here or they're turning that TV on, and I'm sure there are lots of other shows they'd rather watch, and they're trying to get the information so they can make informed decisions. So I'm asking the council to please do some due diligence as regards to the recording of these meetings, and when they're on television, why have half the meetings, so to speak? It's darkened, you can't hear it. Let's just do the job well. The council meetings are done quite well, but not anything else that I have seen. And I think that's really important. There are people who come up here and they speak like this, and they're very quiet, and that's it. There are people come up here and they do this, and otherwise... We don't want the Stepford Wives. We don't want everybody doing the same thing. We want to know what everybody has to say. We want to know how the community feels, and this is the way to do it. The people sitting out there, watching it on television, are just as committed as the people who do get down here. And there are people that are sitting up late nights, typing messages to the council, writing reports, looking up information to get it to you so that you have more information to work with. I think this community deserves to be able to know what's going on, and I think it discriminates against the people who are seeing this on television for whatever reason, can't be here to these meetings, they'd have to come to an awful lot of meetings. I think it discriminates against them by not making the meeting fully accessible. So I'm asking you to consider this, to make it a priority, and to do everything you can to get this now, especially because of the information that we're working on, particularly to get this out to the public in the best possible way. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jamie. I think we've had some problems, and could the city manager address that issue? I'm going to ask to turn it over to the city clerk. We have had some TV problems, you're right.
Right, we have had quite a few recently, and partly there are pieces of equipment that have recently been replaced. The... our station here or our room was put together approximately seven to 10 years ago, and it's unfortunate that several pieces have failed, but now have been replaced. So that's part of the problem. The other solution would be to always have a professional technician in the television room, like we do for city council meetings. Your problem... the problems would be far less if that was the case. Oftentimes, and that is a money-saving measure for the city, we have staff people who are attending the meetings as well as attending the television recordings for other commissions outside of the city council. So my thought was that we, as a staff, would get together with the council subcommittee and talk about the costs involved with possibly having a professional person for all committee meetings and/or other measures that we could do beyond the replacement of equipment, which we've already done now, to make sure that the problems are lessened or pretty much non-existent. So we are concerned about that, and we're looking into it, and so hopefully we'll find a solution that will make it 95% reliable.
Okay, great. I discovered that one of the parts that had broken was called a character generator. I thought that was very appropriate for Brisbane. Character generator. We got a new one now, so we have a new character generator. Any more oral communications? Yes, sir. Yeah, but that was for an item on the agenda, right?
That's correct, but I was wondering if I could present, because I might believe
You're Mr. Block, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. This has to do with the soil processing and...
Correct.
What's the council's wishes on that regard?
Yeah, I have a problem.
That's pretty far down the agenda, I think. If he's come this far, maybe we would make his comments out of order, if that's...
It's okay with the council. We probably won't be discussing it much because it is on the agenda later, but you're welcome to make your presentation.
I have some materials here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wow, they get glossy.
My name is Brad Block. I'm a Brisbane resident, and I was told I would only have a few minutes to speak, so I thought I would actually just read these comments to make sure I don't run over. Dear members of the Brisbane City Council, I have lived in Brisbane for a short time compared to many of you. In that time, I have seen how dedicated the citizens here are to preserving the unique character of this small oasis of peace, quiet, and connection to nature, adjacent to the overcrowded, dirty, and noisy neighbor to the north. And I know that the city council shares this view and sincerely wants to do the right and honorable thing in all matters. For this reason, I'm urging the city council to immediately suspend the permit for active operations of Ballyan Soil Processing until such time as the height of the mounds has been reduced and certified to be within the 25-foot height limit required by law, and a plan for dust and stormwater management has been submitted and approved by the city and other applicable authorities, including ongoing monitoring provisions and penalties for noncompliance. The staff report submitted to the city council this evening concedes that the height of the mounds in many cases approaches or exceeds 70 feet, while the permitted height is only 25 feet. The intent of the height limit is to establish a fixed, reasonable base elevation consistent with the surroundings. It is not the intent to allow the base elevation to be arbitrarily chosen or increased over time, and therefore, the finished elevation to scale to arbitrary heights. If this were the case, then there would be no point to a height limit at all. The staff report also concedes that dust has been a continual problem. After more than 30 years here, the operator still does not have a solution for dust control, as evidenced by these pictures taken one afternoon a few days ago. It is not the obligation of the city to come up with an effective plan to control the dust. It is the right of the city to demand that its actions be met. I also request that the city council use its power to enact substantial fines on the operator and landowner for current and future violations to show that it is serious about enforcing its own laws. I urge the city to work with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, the Bay Conservation and Development Commission, the California EPA, and the County Board of Health as applicable to verify that standard legal procedures are followed, and the illegal operation in violation of permits of this facility is immediately ceased. This is a very large facility and has been in constant violation of the terms of its permit for a long time. The dust that is discharged into the air pollutes the entire downland residential, commercial, and recreational areas. No one even knows what toxins may be contained in this dust. Furthermore, if the operator wishes to apply for a permit to expand the... I urge the city to require a full environmental impact report process to account for the impact on air and water quality, traffic, wildlife, and other natural resources on this truly massive-scale operation in such relatively urban as well as environmentally sensitive setting. Brisbane is also embarking on a massive 700-acre new development in the Baylands that will irrevocably change the future and possibly the viability of this community. This new Baylands development will require complex development agreements, monitoring, and enforcement by the city. The city council needs to demonstrate through its actions with Bayland Soil Processing that it is prepared to aggressively and proactively deal with such complexity, rather than simply look the other way as the violations continue to pile up and laws continue to be ignored and unenforced. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
So when were these pictures taken?
The 14th.
Okay. Very helpful, thank you. We will be talking about all this later in the agenda. We will be talking about all this later in the agenda. Hope you're still here. Because there are a lot of additional information that I think you would find useful in understanding the problem we're having. Okay. Any more oral communications? All right. Let's move on then to the presentation. Now, I see the people who are involved in their presentation from the mosquito abatement district are here. First, our very own Bob Maynard.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, my name is Bob Maynard, and I'm your appointed trustee to the San Mateo County Mosquito Abatement District. About once a year, I invite a member of the staff of the mosquito district to come and talk about the district programs. Today, I've invited Robert Gay, who is the manager of the district, to address you. And I introduce him right now.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bob.
Mayor Miller, Mayor Protem, city council, staff, and residents of Brisbane. Your mosquito and vector control district wants to thank you for the opportunity to come and address your city and provide an update on the services and the programs that we provide. West Nile virus is alive and well within the state of California. We have, especially in the Bay Area, as of August 6, a total of 18 human cases of West Nile virus have been reported. We have also two fatalities from West Nile virus. They are from Sacramento and LA County. In the Bay Area, we have Santa Clara County and Contra Costa County. Both have recorded human cases, multiple cases of dead birds that are positive, and mosquito pools. In San Mateo County, we have recorded a number of chronic West Nile virus cases within birds and squirrels. Those are typically low-level cases where they can't infect a mosquito or a human. Other than that, we've had no positive human cases, no positive birds or squirrels at this time. Our staff continues to provide for your residents a complete mosquito control throughout your neighborhoods. We also do intense surveillance for the vector-borne diseases within our communities. That covers West Nile virus, most of the encephalitis, the Lyme disease, which now, if you've heard from CDC, the number of cases have actually tripled, more than they've thought in the past. We typically, in our surveillance work of the ticks within the county, especially in the parks and San Bruno Mountain, we will typically find 1% to 2% positive ticks for Lyme disease. When we find those positives along your trails, we will post signs warning the public that this area does have Lyme disease present, and they need to take certain precautionary measures. We also do all the surveillance for hantavirus and plague within your community. We do find hantavirus and bubonic plague on San Bruno Mountain. We typically will analyze that two to three times a year. And we do monitor the population to make sure that it remains inzoatic within the small mammals and it hasn't moved into the cats and dogs and humans. We also do all the door-to-door surveillance for mosquito inspections. We've been having a great deal of problems with broken pipes underneath people's homes. And those pipes, as they shear off, of course, and you have all that matter, that liquid, fluids, including feces, going underneath their homes, which breeds mosquitoes. We, anytime somebody calls from your community, that's called a service request for us, we are there within their property, knocking on their door within 24 hours. Another service that we provide, everything we provide, of course, is free. The other service we provide is controlling ground nesting yellow jackets. For some reason, right now, we're having about 100 yellow jacket nests called a month. That will increase to about 500 a month in September and October. Most of our ground nesting yellow jacket problems are in the southern part of the county and the coastal areas, but it seems like more and more have been moving up to the northern part. We also provide mosquito-eating fish for all of your backyard ponds. So all of your ponds that you have and your neighbors have, we provide a special guppy-looking fish that actually eats all the mosquitoes that are in that pond. And that's another free service that we provide. We do a great many presentations to the civic groups and to the local fairs that communities have. That's probably one of our key things we like to do is get out into the public and let them know about the services that we provide, and since everything we provide is free. We do a great many lectures in your schools, especially the high school biology classes. They always like to learn about all the vector-borne diseases. We also do identification for any insect or tick that your neighbors or your residents have. They bring in doors off their kitchen cabinets, wanting to know what insects are boring in them. They bring in ticks that are embedded in their dogs. All of that, we can identify and test if there's a vector-borne disease associated with it. A new program that we took from the county, the county eliminated all of their vector control programs and transferred them to us in '08, was the rat program, the rodent control, which, for many communities, they have a sewer baiting program that is paid for by the city. It's coordinated with a Dewey Pest Control, and we do the quality assurance monitoring of the program to make sure that it's operating smoothly. The other thing that we've done, which has been very exciting, is that we've hired a great many new staff members over the last two years. We hired a new finance director and accountant from the corporate world, which was quite a change for us. We also hired a new assistant manager and laboratory director with a national search. So we got Dr. Nyir from Santa Clara County. And we hired a number of new technicians. All of this has allowed us to expand our programs and to do greater, bigger, and better things as far as our laboratory goes. We brought in new PCR equipment so we could do DNA testing in our laboratory. That allows us to go out at night, collect the mosquitoes, bring them in in the morning, identify them, analyze them with DNA testing, and then if they're positive for the disease, we can go out and treat those mosquitoes at night. So it's all can be done within a 24-hour period. Currently, before that, you'd have to wait 10 days to get your information back from the state. We also have another new program that we started up. There's a mosquito called the tiger mosquito, which is very prevalent. As you well know, it's causing a huge dengue outbreak in Southeast Asia right now. Well, that mosquito was found in two counties, Fresno County and Madera County, which caused a major uproar in the state of California. Since we have a great many cemeteries that are concentrated in one area, in San Mateo County, we instituted a tiger mosquito surveillance program in that area, of Colma especially. But there's other cemeteries, many of them, that are around this county. So we have initiated a special surveillance program for that mosquito. We had, we had that mosquito in this county, if you remember back about six years ago, when the heavenly bamboo came into this county through South San Francisco, through the AFIS facility. And we eradicated it at that point. But again, we're now worried that it could be back. So we're all excited about the programs that are ongoing. We're looking at ways of getting that information out to your community. So if you know, and we'll be working with your city manager, if there's ways that we can help to get the information out and let them know what's available to them, we will. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gay. Question?
What does a tiger mosquito look like?
It's, it's actually a very beautiful mosquito. It's hard to say that, but mosquitoes aren't usually that way. But it's got a beautiful white lyre across its back. It looks like a violin across the pronotum of the mosquito. It's black with jet-white pronotums.
Is there something that we could put in your newsletter? You know, I mean, to print a picture of it?
Absolutely.
Because I think identification is the most important thing. I mean, to say, you know, people have different interpretations of what that means, so, you know...
We will do that.
Yeah. And that might be something that we might be able to print in our newsletter, or if you can get a picture of it, so, you know, and kind of help folks identify.
Is this the yellow fever mosquito?
Yes.
So there is a picture of it on the back of the pamphlet that he brought to us. But you are calling it by a different name.
Well, it's a tiger mosquito, is what we like to call it. There's a cousin of it, is the 80s egypti mosquito, as you see right there.
But this looks very similar to the...
Yes, they're almost identical.
Oh, okay. So would that be a good picture to print?
That's a good picture, yes.
Okay. But that's blown up too, right?
And there's a great many articles right now on the dengue outbreak that's going on around the globe. It's significant.
I never look at my mosquitoes, I just know that they're squashed.
Yeah, y'all sent us pictures of squashed mosquitoes.
I had one more question. What is, you know, personally, I don't get bit very much when I'm in mosquito areas, and I don't know exactly what that's attributed to. Maybe they don't like my blood. But what type of repellent can people use? Because I've heard of different things that have been effective, like, you know, bounce, the stuff you put in your laundry.
Don't use that. Actually, the, when I was, I'm retired from the Navy, and we did a lot of research. When I was in the Navy as a medical ophthalmologist up in Alaska, testing different types of repellents. And it's still, the original repellent DEET is still probably one of the best repellents that's available. There is a formulation that is, makes it even better. And the formulation is in a product called Ultrathon. And it's, it's a lotion, so it's microencapsulated. So the chemical's microencapsulated in the lotion and it's slow-released over a period of 12 hours. So you can put the lotion on, and it's not going to cause all kind of damage to your plastics and other components like the old oil would do. So the Ultrathon is an excellent product to use. That's for the body. For your clothing, you'll want to use something that's more of a heavier-duty repellent, and that's called permone. And you can get that in most of the outdoor facilities too. The permone is just a spray you put on your clothing. Because most of the floodwater mosquitoes will bite through your clothing to get to you.
Okay. Is that something you can send to our city clerk? And maybe we can kind of print something up in their newsletter, or maybe you could write something for it?
We will.
As to, for our citizens to kind of, you know...
Alert them.
Be educated.
Yeah, there was a very interesting article that was, that was put out. I think it was CDC that put out the 10 best repellents that were out there. And we can make that available for your residents.
Are any of those repellents non-toxic?
It's, depending on how you look at "non-toxic." I mean...
I mean, you know, like, some people have, you know, irritation to certain chemicals...
Right.
...applied to the skin. So something that is not so harsh on someone's skin, but mosquitoes don't like the...
The military is developing two new repellents right now that should be out, I'm guessing, within the next two or three years. It's quite a lengthy process looking for plant products, which is what they are, that actually repel mosquitoes. But they've actually got a couple of them that are being tested back in a Florida lab. So we should be able to see a couple of new products coming out here before too long.
So eating garlic is...
That's for vampires.
You know, if, your attractiveness to the mosquitoes is based on your body chemistry, and the CO2 that you give off. So if you, if you exhale a great amount of CO2 through your skin, then you're going to be attracting more mosquitoes. And they're also attracted to warmth when they get closer. So if you're warm-bodied, super-warm-skinned, and you give off a lot of CO2, you're going to attract more mosquitoes. The other thing I would not recommend is getting an electric zapper, you know, for mosquitoes that they sell in stores. If you want to do that, give it to your neighbor, because it's going to attract more mosquitoes into that area, but it's not necessarily going to bring them all the way to the zapper. It's just going to get them in the area, and then they're going to be searching for the CO2 that's given off. So...
Right. Other questions?
Does citronella work?
Citronella does work, but it only works for a very small region, small area around the candle. So you got to get real close to it. I would be most concerned about Lyme disease at this point.
I was going to ask, has it, it's the deer tick that carries that, right?
It is, yes. It's a deer tick that carries, Exodeus pacificus. But for us, it's, it's very prevalent along our trails that people like to hike on, like to bring their dogs and ca, you know, not cats, but their dogs and their kids along. And what we're concerned about is, is the volume of ticks that are present here in this county are actually quite high. But we do only have 1% to 2% that are positive for Lyme disease. But it's important that people wear their repellents when they're out in these areas and these parks. But it's, it's, it's one of those diseases that the spirochete can work its way into your joints. And it's very hard for the antibiotics to get in there and control those spirochetes when they're in your joints. And when that happens, that leads to arthritis and, and all the difficulties with it. So it's, it's really important that if you, if you're out and you get ticks on you and you, and they're embedded in you, that you go to your doctor as quickly as you can and get looked at.
Right.
But those aren't on San Bruno Mountain. Those would be over, like, in East Bay Hills, or...
We have them right here in the coastal mountains.
Coastal, but they, that's where you would have deer. Like, say, Pacifica, for example. But not, we don't have any deer on San Bruno Mountain, so...
I'd have to check to see your San Bruno Mountain. I would, I would bet you probably do. But I will check for you.
Okay, you know, that'd be great. Because, yeah, I always assume that, you know, the deer ticks...
We're finding, we're finding the deer ticks right up to people's residence. I mean, that close.
We have a lot of ticks in Brisbane. I always call them brown dog ticks.
We call them dog ticks, yeah.
But I...
There are different types of ticks, too.
That, that is a different type of tick. That vector is a different group of diseases. Rocky Mount spotted fever and anaplymosis. And there's a number of diseases that are vectored by those other ticks.
I'd also like to see if, I mean, I know that you're going to provide us with a report on the 10 most effective, but also if there's anyone who has alternative methods for people who can't use the chemical-type products. I think it'd be good to put into our newsletter also, because there are a lot of people with sensitivities.
Right.
You could make a comment afterwards?
Yeah, yeah. I saw her. Yeah. So it would be interesting to know whether, you know, what kind of ticks are on San Bruno Mountain, and have any of them been discovered to be carrying a disease.
We'll do that.
Yeah, that would be interesting to know, because there are a lot of ticks up on San Bruno Mountain. And of course, we are on San Bruno Mountain, so there are a lot around. And so people need to know about that. I just, there was just a report on the news tonight, and you mentioned it, I think, about the Centers for Disease Control discovered that the prevalence of Lyme disease was something like 10 times greater than the reporting previously. So that's pretty huge explosion.
Yeah, they normally report about 20,000 to 30,000 new cases a year, and they're estimating it's over 300,000.
300,000, yeah. And I know I had a colleague who got Lyme disease and didn't realize it, so therefore, she wasn't treated early. And then she ended up being basically physically disabled. So it's, it's, it's a difficult, bad disease. So we need to be careful about it. Okay. Okay, now, one of our members of the public had a question. Come on up, or comment, whatever.
Thanks very much. Karen Cunningham. Whoa, that was just kind of blowing my head off in the back of the room here. Before we go publishing the 10 most effective insecticides, pesticides, poisons that people can add to the collection of pesticides and poisons we're already carrying here in Brisbane, can we please check with mayoclinic.org? First of all, Ultrathon is a nanotechnology that is one of the top 10 most dangerous nanotechnology chemicals that we have. If you check with Mayo Clinic, it's not coming out of my head. These are kind of facts. So before we go telling the Brisbane public to buy all of these 10 insecticides for all of these things, can we really look at this very carefully? Because I'm sitting back there as a person with a science background that's absolutely horrified by the comments that we're going to ask our people of Brisbane to go out and buy all these chemicals to combat these bugs that are now superbugs because of chemicals in the first place. So if we can be very judicious in the way we treat this, I would be most grateful. And I would be very happy to do some research on anything that you... And I would be very happy to do some research on anything that you think we should be putting out to the public about what pesticides we should be adding to Brisbane. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Gage, do you want to respond?
I'll be happy to work with it.
Okay. Okay, great. Michelle?
Michelle Sammon, Brisbane resident. I totally agree with what Karen says. Many years, I hate fleas, I hate ticks, I hate mosquitoes. Many years ago, I had a flea infestation and I got so frustrated, I sprayed myself with Black Flag when they were hopping on me. And I got so ill that I couldn't get out of bed for two or three days. Doctors said I'd basically poisoned myself. And I guess I want to make sure that in the rat control program that we're not using any second-generation rodenticides, which I believe the council has moved to ban from Brisbane. And I also really want to make sure that any of these chemicals we're using are not harmful to frogs or dragonflies or bees or other insects. Because it's really hard to pick an insecticide for one insect. And I don't know if you read Time Magazine this past week. One-third of the honeybees in the United States have colony collapsed this past year. So we are in dire straits, and they think that it is from the prolific use of insecticides. And the prolific use of things like Roundup and, um, other Monsanto miracle chemicals has caused a severe loss in the frog habitat, which has escalated the mosquito population. And I think one of the best mosquito abatement programs we could have is to restore more frog habitat and have more frogs. Because we had... We did not have these kind of mosquito problems when I was growing up, when there were frogs everywhere eating them. And so I really... I think that as much as it's horrible to think about Lyme disease, ticks, and everything else, believe me, I get a tick and I'm just like, "Ah!" But at the same time, I'm going to, you know, do a tick check and pluck it off of me rather than categorically spraying myself with an insecticide that is indiscriminate and also affects other insects like butterflies and bees and dragonflies and the insects that we need. And bee colony collapse is a serious, serious issue in our food supply. So I agree with Karen, step lightly, very lightly.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Gage, you want to respond?
The mosquito abatement district concentrates on using bacterias in the water to control mosquitoes called BTI. And we also have another bacteria that we use in the water, which is our mainstay for the work that we do. We would rather concentrate on controlling mosquitoes when they're in their larval stage in the water rather than worry about trying to control them when they're in the adult stage. It's much more expensive doing it that way. But for us, it's... We don't drive up and down the streets, fogging the streets like you will see out in the valley, which will happen a great deal, because many of those mosquito abatement districts don't have the funding to be able to do the larviciding programs that we can do here in San Mateo County. Uh, we totally agree with, um, the limited use of the adulticides. Uh, the only time that they've been used here in the Bay Area is down in Santa Clara County when they had their positive West Nile virus case. They were fogging the streets in those limited areas where they had the positive mosquitoes. Uh, for us, we try and prevent that by controlling the larval stage. Um, the only times we will use adulticides is underneath people's homes when they have those broken pipes and they have incredibly large populations of mosquitoes. Uh, but other than that, we do not go fogging up and down the streets. Uh, for us, we believe the same as your residents do. The less chemicals that we can use, the better. So we stress the use of mosquito fish in the ponds and the larvicides using bacterias.
Okay, thank you. Please, that microphone, because we're on TV. Sorry.
The rodenticide program, uh, what we're looking at is actually going to a, um, a census block which has no poison in it for us to determine. We would like to get away from just putting rodent bait out throughout an entire community, which has been done for probably 30 years. We would rather first find out where are the rats and deal with concentrating any type of poison in those areas. And the second-generation rodenticides has obvious drawbacks to it. If you're using it in an open environment, where those rats that die from the second generation could obviously infect some kind of a wildlife that could come down and feed on it. Uh, in sewer rats, baiting, the sewer rats die within the sewers. But we still don't want to just put rodenticides throughout an entire community. So what we're looking at is going to a census block program which has no poison in it. It just allows us to see exactly where are the rats located in the sewers. And then we can concentrate the baiting in that specific area to kill that group of rats.
All right, so thank you very much for coming and enlightening us and also for our citizens. You know a lot about this too.
Yeah, very educational.
Yeah, very educational. Okay, thank you. Um, now we have just a small additional part to the mosquito abatement issue. And I guess the city manager, you want to handle that?
So, um, we have received, as have each of the cities in San Mateo County, a report from the grand jury. Um, in the report from the grand jury, per their style of receipt or, um, asking for input from the local communities, they've asked two basic questions. Um, one was to appoint a council member to the district board if a representative cannot be found after vetting applicants. Um, our response, per council approval, is that the city of Brisbane has a council appointment resident... Representative, Robert Maynard, who has been actively participating for many years. The second recommendation from the grand jury was to require regular reporting about the district's operations by their representative at a scheduled council meeting. Um, and our response to that is that Brisbane has been regularly reporting to the council at scheduled city council meetings. And there are no plans to change that. I think Mr. Maynard has come probably at least a couple of times a year, if not more, in probably the last three to four years. Um, so with the council's approval, um, we would send this on to the Honorable Richard Livermore, Superior Court Judge, County of San Mateo.
Okay. Anyone like to make that motion?
Make the motion, is it a... Is it a required thing to do?
Yes, it is a required thing to do.
So a motion to approve the, uh, letter to send to, uh, Honorable Judge Richard Livermore.
Sir, a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? So thank you, Bob. And thank you for, you know, your continuing representation of the city on this district board. I think we're probably one of the better-informed communities, thanks to you.
Yeah, thank you, Bob.
Thanks a lot.
Could I get some water for you? You get a chance, Mr. Richard.
Pass it in. Okay, consent calendar.
Motion to approve minutes of June 3rd and the minutes of June 10th, 2013.
I'll second that.
Senator's a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. So now we move on to all business. And that has to do with, uh, the roof repair and mold remediation at our fire station. And that was held over at the request of Councilmember Lentz. And so do we have an update? And we'll ask Councilmember Lentz what his experience has been in following up on this issue. But, uh, turn it over to the city manager and then...
Um, I think I'll refer it to the public works director.
Okay, all right, that's good.
Well, there's nobody I can refer to, sir, so I guess I'll take it on then. I'd be happy to do- Well, I guess I could do that to Ron, but I just... I might need him sometime. So I'd be happy to give a quick update on it, or if Councilmember Lentz would like to offer his comments first. I have to... Whatever your... The council's pleasure.
Well, why don't you start?
Okay, quick update, so at-
I'm sure Cliff will-
Okay.
Try him in.
So during our deliberations, the council's deliberations for this year and for its capital improvement program, the council authorized $200,000 to repair the roof. And that dollar amount, uh, we knew it at the time, did not include the repairs to the interior of the building, which were necessitated because we have had some water intrusion and we have had some mold. So the report was really a supplemental appropriation request for $76,000 that would include the cost to remove all of the plywood and paneling in the areas that we believe through investigation to be affected by mold, to remediate that mold, to then replace that, to then go back in and clean out the HVAC system to make sure that it was perfectly clean and re-insulated, and to then go do the spore testing on it to make sure that the station was indeed safe after all the work was done. Uh, the one clarification I want to make that I may not have been clear during my last presentation is it does talk in the staff report about the fact that there's going to be a five-year warranty on the repair that'd be done. So within three to five years, it'd be prudent to get up on the roof and start, you know, looking at it. And that some repairs would probably be necessitated. That's the reality of an old roof that's got a patch on it. I did not mean to infer that it would be the same magnitude of cost that we are putting forth now. It would not be a $276,000 repair. It might be a couple thousand dollar repair to go back in and patch holes that have occurred, but it's nowhere near that same order of magnitude. So with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Yeah, thanks. And I want to thank the council for, uh, postponing the decision to vote on it. Guy had a conversation with Randy and Clay, and it was very, uh, very informative. And so, uh, yeah, you know, we talked about, you know, if there was water intrusion after the repair was done, that the cost to mitigate that would not be at the $276,000, but, you know, somewhere in the under $10,000 range. Um, yeah, we also talked about, you know, the possibilities of maybe having some kind of, uh, final product design that allows greater accessibility or easier accessibility. But that might be difficult to implement. And so if you could just, uh, you know, explain why that's the case, Randy.
Well, you know, it's interesting, sir, because I think both you and Councilmember Conway have come at this from different directions. And it's something we'd like to do. Uh, we've looked at both putting water intrusion meters in the roof and what sort of technology is available out there right now. Um, and your question really speaks to, is it possible to design some sort of access hatches within the building, within the sheet rock or the plywood paneling of it, so you could get in there and more easily find it? And of course, the answer is yes, if you knew where the leaks were going to occur. But if we knew where the leaks were going to occur, we would try and fix it. So otherwise, we end up playing this real guessing game as to how often do you place them and where do you put them? And my concern is that we would spend perhaps more money placing these items and ending up with a rather ungainly, difficult man... system to manage than we would if we simply just went up there and instituted regular roof inspections and then did the repair work as it came up.
Okay, so the, uh, you know, to do the investigating would not be that intrusive? You know, it would be, um, you know, a significant amount of opening up walls and things like that?
No, 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 no. The roof, the... Once you've got the roof patched and you've done a water test on it and demonstrated that it's not leaking, and then you've got a warranty period... Actually, during the warranty period, you can bring the manufacturer out there, do the inspection with you. And then, you know, maybe at the five... At the end of the five-year period, you might have a recommendation from them to do a couple of other patch-up items. So that's where you're working then, you're working on the roof, because you've prevented the water theoretically from getting into the building itself and getting into the wooden framing of it and causing the mold.
Okay. And then, um, you know, if the council approves this tonight, do you think there's the possibility of being able to repair the roof and all the other work that is needed in order to have the firefighters, um, go into the repaired firehouse by the end of the year? Is that a possibility?
It is my goal to get the roof repaired done prior to the rainy season.
Sure.
I've got to carve out some time in the next couple of weeks to finish some specifications, try and get that out to bid, get it back and approved on a council's agenda, and get it moving forward very quickly. But I would rather do that before it rains again.
Sure, and then the portable, um, facility that we have for the firefighters, when does the... Is that like a year-to-year type contract and when does it expire?
There was a term on it, sir, and we're paying on it on a month-to-month basis. Off the top of my head, I don't recall what... But there is a year term. And I don't recall what the year term is.
And then you just give them like 30 days' notice?
I'd have to get back to you to see where we are on the term of the lease, or I'm sorry, I don't have that on top of my head.
No problem. All right, thanks.
Sure.
All right. Yeah, it sounds like you guys were good with it. And, um, yeah, the information that I got from Randy, uh, definitely, uh, you know, made me want to go in the same direction as all of you. So if anyone does have any other questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, so, um, make a motion to provide direction to staff if deemed necessary and appropriate, including direction as to whether or not... Oh, I guess we've already done that still.
The motion to approve a supplemental appropriation of $76,000.
Yeah, that's all we're doing then, because we've already approved the $200,000 in the budget. Okay.
I would second that.
Further discussion?
Call the question.
Call in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's done. So we look forward to the firefighters moving back into the station-
Yes, sir.
-in the near future.
Sure they'll be happy with that.
Okay. Next item under all business is to consider the request we've had to extend the comment period on the Baylands draft EIR. Staff report?
Uh, yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council.
Sounds like Mr. Sawicki.
Yes, thank you. The Baylands draft EIR was published in June 11th of 2013. The California Environmental Quality Act states, "The public review period for a draft EIR shall not be less than 30 days, nor should it be longer than 60 days, except under unusual circumstances. Recognition of the complexity of the EIR and the importance of the project for the future of the community." The council established a 120-day comment period closing on October 8th, 2013. The city has received two written requests to extend the comment deadline. Open Space and Ecology Committee has requested the deadline be extended another 115 days to January 31st, 2014. And the Baylands EIR Review Citizens Committee requested a 45-day extension to push it to November 22nd of 2013. A Mountain Watch has also requested an unspecified time extension as well. While CEQA specifies the draft EIR review period should not exceed 60 days, except under unusual circumstances, it does not specify a maximum review period length for the council, so that is under the council's discretion. There is another provision in CEQA that specifies that public agencies shall carry out their responsibilities for preparing and reviewing EIRs within a reasonable period of time. There is no legal requirement for the council to either approve or disapprove this request. It's up to the council's discretion to determine whether to grant such an extension, the length of the... Or the length of the extension, if you choose to grant an extension, based on the unusual circumstances involved. And with that, I will turn it over to the council.
Would the city attorney like to weigh in on that, please?
Mayor and council, the Director of Community Services, Mr. Sawicki, did a very good job of outlining the legal requirements for the CEQA review. As he mentioned, the CEQA guidelines, which are the state guidelines that govern the CEQA process, provide that in a situation where it's provided to the state clearinghouse, as it was in this case, 45 days would be the minimum. 60 days is normally the maximum with the extension possible for what the CEQA guidelines call unusual circumstances. In this case, the council has extended the normal review period of 60 days to 120 days based on the unusual circumstances of the complexity and the length of the EIR. At this point, the council can entertain the various requests for extension. There's one for 45 days, one until January the 31st, and one that I believe is unspecified. And then if the council determines that there are additional unusual circumstances, then the council in its discretion can determine that the EIR review period could be extended for a period of time that's consistent with the unusual circumstances. The extension beyond 120 days certainly would be out of the ordinary in terms of CEQA review by organizations, but there's no legal requirement that it could not be extended beyond 120 days. Any questions? Any questions?
So if there were to be a motion to extend the time, does it need to define the nature on the unusual circumstances?
It's not required. It might be advisable for the council in extending the time, if it chooses to do so, to identify what those circumstances are so that the record is complete.
Okay. All right, thank you. Colleagues?
You know, I have a question for staff.
Sure.
If I may. So, John, how many meetings were scheduled for the planning commission to review the draft DIR?
There were, just for clarification, the planning commission is in a similar advisory role, they're advisory to the city council, and their role is to review the final DIR, the draft DIR plus the comments, plus the responses of the comments. They will not be independently reviewing the draft DIR.
Oh, okay.
There were a number of meetings that were held, there were community meetings that the commission hosted to allow the DIR consultant to present the DIR, and then near the end of the comment period, there'll be several meetings scheduled to allow the public to provide testimony on the draft DIR, and again, the planning commission will host those meetings.
Will host, so they're more of a host rather than reviewing and advising? Okay, okay. All right, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions?
I think to Stuart, Stuart, on the letter, he wrote a letter from Open Space and Ecology Committee, and they're requesting the 115 days extension. Seems like they're reviewing the whole DIR, is it?
Yes, that is their plan. I mean, the feeling is, and the chairperson is here, but the feeling of the Open Space and Ecology Committee is that all aspects of the DIR relate to ecology. You know, when you start talking about traffic and circulation, you're talking about greenhouse gases, when you're talking about the visual aspects of the buildings, you're talking about the impact of the visual aspect on the mountain as well as on the bay, so it's very difficult to unwind any one chapter from the issues related to open space and ecology. I'm going to look to my chairperson to see if I've gotten the sentiment correct.
Any other questions? Shall we open it to the public, or?
Yeah, I'll have other questions later.
Later, okay. All right, public comment? Greg?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name is Greg Anderson, 349 San Bruno Avenue. I'm the vice chairman and organizer for the citizens committee. Now, as you all know very well, any citizen can comment on the DEIR, but because of the special circumstances of the Baylands and its importance to Brisbane, the city council has asked the citizens to form a committee so that the DEIR can be discussed and analyzed in a group, so that the citizens can come to an understanding of what is in the DEIR. So to this purpose, the citizens committee has divided the sections of the DEIR into five separate periods, which have three or four chapters in each section. And we held a couple of preliminary meetings, some before the DEIR was released in order to organize ourselves, and once the DEIR came out, we established a period of a few weeks for people to begin reading the DEIR, and then we divided up the remaining time among these five periods with approximately two weeks per period, so that people could review their sections within the two-week period, come and meet together to discuss the section, and then present their findings to the group as a whole. And it was necessary to have five periods, not only because of the total length of the DEIR, but also because the individual members of the community, being volunteers, are unable to read the entire DIR. So different participants will be participating in four or five different sections, and it's very difficult in these tight two-week periods to schedule meetings for different people to come together and have their discussions. So, per our original plan, if everything executed perfectly through these two-week sections, we would finish all of the sections of the DEIR in time for the 128 period to complete. However, with people's schedules being what they were, not all of the subsections were able to commit, complete on time. Our first period has completed, and we were able to present three of the four sections, but hydrology was unable to complete. And when you miss your time window, it's difficult to reschedule, because the people in that subcommittee are now working on their other committees. So by the time we get to the end, we're going to need to go back and reschedule the ones that we weren't able to complete on the original schedule. So that's why we asked for an additional 45 days, so we would have a period to get in the additional sections that we missed the first time, and then once everything was finished, because as Stuart pointed out, we're finding that the DIR sections interrelate with each other a lot, we'd also like to have an additional period after we've done all of the sessions individually to talk about how they interrelate with each other. So I just wanted to explain our process and the reasoning for our request for this extension. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
You know, I do.
Sure.
Yeah, and you know, first of all, I want to thank you, Greg, for taking on this monumental task, you know, and also all the other, you know, community members who are on that committee. I mean, it's a big undertaking, it's a large document, and there's a lot of facts and, you know, really technical information in it. How's the morale been, you know, at the meetings and, you know, getting to, you know, get that information that's deep in the document to the surface?
I would say that the morale has been really good, I would say even better than I expected.
Okay.
Because, you know, the DIR is so large that I was expecting at our first meeting that people would be saying, you know, "Oh, my gosh, it's too long, two weeks isn't enough, let's expand all of these periods to three weeks or longer so we can do it." But people weren't saying that, they were saying, "Okay, you know, it's a lot of work, but we're getting through it." And we have had some people, due to changes of circumstances, drop out. We lost maybe 25% of the community, of the committee size, in the first period, but the people who are remaining are pretty well dedicated, you know, there are various levels of people putting in the time that they can.
Sure.
But they volunteered for the number of periods that they have, and, you know, there's a small number of people who don't make their commitments, but, you know, because we have multiple people in each section and a lot of people who are really dedicated, I think we're getting really good comments and getting pretty complete coverage. I've read through most of the DIR myself so far, I'm missing a couple of sections of Chapter 4.
Good for you.
But I'm trying to get through it as quickly as I can, so I can see the interrelationships and help to, you know, organize and send hints out to the different.
All right, it sounds like you're quite satisfied with the approach that you all have taken, and it sounds like it's been very productive.
Yeah, yeah, I think it has, but, you know, again, we're running out of time, and I think a little more would give us a really good result.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I'm in agreement with that, so I'll just let you know, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Anyone else like to, Michelle?
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident and chairman for the Open Space and Ecology Committee. Our committee has worked very diligently in approaching the draft DIR and trying to work through all of the sections. And Clark, you asked about, you know, are they doing the whole thing? But the whole thing is completely woven together, and you read one section and it refers you to another section, but then you go to that section and they didn't cover that. And so even just in doing the Chapter 3, the site description, sounds like it would be easy, but there were many gaps in the site description that then questions, well, did they test for that? Because the site description doesn't mention anything about the boneyard, or stofford chemical, or the firing range up on Ice House Hill, which is, you know, polluted with lead, or Champion's Bedway, or any of the other various things of sources of contamination over the last 80 years. And so then, when you're reading through the rest of the document, you're looking for, did they check for this, did they look for that? And having learned a valuable lesson when we went through the draft DIR process for the Northeast Ridge, and how many things were not adequately addressed, and then didn't get to be adequately addressed later, 30 years later, when we really felt the supplemental DIR or an addendum to the DIR would have been appropriate, but because they had not been addressed in the original DIR, they did not get addressed later. And the way that I understood what, I attended all the sessions that Lloyd Zola gave in instructing us, and the way that I understand it is that this program DIR, part project, but primarily program DIR, sets the stage and the framework for everything downstream from this. So while it would be convenient to think, "Well, we'll deal with that when we get to the project level," my understanding is that if you don't deal with it at the program level now, you cannot then go back and deal with something else or add to that when you get to the project level, because this sort of sets the framework and the setting, CEQA framework and setting, for everything that comes downstream from this. And I don't know how much of the draft DIR any of you have actually read so far. It is extremely tedious document with a lot of referrals and references and footnotes, and then you kind of go combing through this and combing through that, and yet there are basic gaps that are missing, I'm finding, that are missing, where we haven't addressed things. And so it's not like we haven't scheduled a meeting every single week to go over chapters. We are not making it through the chapters. I am concerned that we're not going through it line by line as closely as we should, because the devil's in the details, and you know that. And we had thought, well, another month or another two months and we could get through the whole thing, but then you're in the holidays, and one of our committee members is not really available in November and half of December. And how concentrated can you be through the holidays? I've already devoted a tremendous amount of time, and so have all the other committee members, in doing our homework and doing the reading and reviewing the comments, and we cannot fit it all in by October 8th, certainly. And so we felt that it was best to go ahead and extend it to January 31st, so that we could have January for our final kind of review and submission of comments, because we are going to be living with this document for a very long time. And as much as we would like to think, well, we can pick this up later and fix it in a project DIR, you cannot, because this is a program DIR that sets the framework for everything that comes after this. And if this is not done correctly and thoroughly and right, we will suffer for it later. And so I urge us, I mean, it took them three years from the notice of preparation to actually file this document, that I consider to be unusual circumstances, and the sheer volume of this, not necessarily the information it contains, but the sheer volume of this with all of the appendices, I consider to be unusual circumstances. My God, the draft DIR itself weighs about 15 pounds. That doesn't include the 6,000 pages of appendices to which they keep referring, so therefore we have to keep referring to see whether it really was done. And we've already had disagreements about, I mean, disagreements of the way that the methodology has been done for several things, and we're questioning those. And I just feel like if we don't do the work now, we are selling the future short. And I do not ask for this extension lightly, believe me, I am not enjoying this process at all, and I would like to be done with it. But I know that we won't be done with it, even when we think we're done with it, that we will live with this for a very long time. And so I urge us to do the due diligence now, while the door's open, to do that, and not just to assume that we can take care of it later, because you've seen what happens when that, when we think that. And this is a very heavy tome that they've given us, with a lot of irrelevant material in there as well. And so sifting through and not just looking at the numbers, but figuring out what it really means and what it really says, and what we can really do to ensure any mitigation measures that we accept is not so easy. And when you say, "Well, are we going through the whole thing?" Well, who else is going to go through the whole thing besides the citizens committee? The planning commission, your right arm, doesn't even get to really review it or comment on it until it's an DIR. They only get to sit and hear comments and accept comments from the public. They themselves are not even reviewing it, and neither are you, until it's an DIR. So then who is reviewing it? Citizens, individual citizens, people who care, your Open Space and Ecology Committee, your citizens committee, and your Parks and Recreation Commission? And so I think that for us to do the very best job that we can for the people of Brisbane, that we need the extra time. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Jonathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Jonathan Scharfman with UPC. I would, I would just like to briefly make a suggestion, and that is that the committees, the committees actually be afforded the assistance of Brisbane's professional consultants to assist with the incomplete review of the document. I've been, I've been in this business for over 20 years, and I myself rely on the professional assistance of companies like ESA and the technical consultants, the engineering firms, that have actually prepared these documents and can meaningfully summarize their conclusions to myself as a professional, and certainly to members of the city staff and the public. So I would respectfully suggest that city staff consider, or the council consider advising staff, to make your consultants available to these committees to complete the formidable task of review before them. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Sure, is there anyone else who wants to speak before you? Anyone else? Okay, so Michelle and Greg.
The city has, city staff has, you know, indicated that Lloyd Zola is available to assist us, but, and, you know, summarization of different things is good, but they're the people who wrote the report, and so as helpful as it has been to sit through Mr. Zola's, you know, sessions, it still is on us not to have a summary, but to know what it actually says, because it's what it actually says is what the future will be crafted by, not someone's verbal summary of it. And we learned that very well with the draft DIR on the Northeast Ridge, where summaries were said, frog ponds were going to be built, habitat was going to be restored, yada, yada, everybody was all happy, 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 and the actual document was very inadequate. So I think that as much as I appreciate that and would welcome all the help that we could get, it's still up to us as citizens of Brisbane to do our due diligence and see what it actually says.
Okay, thank you. Greg?
I wasn't going to come all the way up here, because I just think that Michelle spoke very well to my comments, and I have nothing further to add. Thank you. Thank you.
No, we just need to have you on TV.
Here I am again.
Thank you. Okay. Any other, uh, public comment? Uh, seeing no requests, uh, colleagues. Carrie, you want to, yeah, wait.
Um, I agree that, that the task before our citizens and the committees, um, is very daunting. And I do thi- I've, I've seen and I've talked to, um, people on OSEC and BB CAG and planning department and no one seems to have enough time to really feel that they are doing their due diligence with the amount of time that they've got right now and the sheer volume and importance of the work. I was talking to one of the members of the planning commission, uh, about her meeting schedule and she said, well, if we had two or three meetings each week, we could maybe get the people's comments in, you know, in the time we have remaining. Um, but we can't even schedule the room for it, for the amount of meetings they need. So I do think that there is some time extension that's going to be needed because if you're getting people wanting to or scheduling meetings that are back to back to back to back, people aren't going to be able to come to them all, even if they really have good intentions to. You're going to be repeating information and questions because you couldn't even watch it on TV and catch up with how many meetings have gone on. So you're going to get a lot of repetitive, you know, questionings. So I, I think it should be extended. And I agree that having technical assistance would be good in reviewing the document, but I don't think it really can be the people that wrote the document giving you that technical advice. Um, it's supposed to be that the public and a regular layperson can understand what these documents mean and, and, and I think that's far from being really the truth of, of it being certainly a quick read and understanding it. So I, I think it should be extended and I think that the forty-five days would be great if we could get through it in that period, but I don't think it's possible with that being Thanksgiving weekend, that, you know, that forty-five days is coming right into the holidays, we're going to have scheduling difficulties. And so I think it's more realistic to be after the holidays, in my opinion.
If, if I can just ask, just a quick question to staff. So, uh, let's see, October, what is it, October eleventh?
Eighth.
October eighth is, uh, is the deadline. If you did forty-five days from October eighth, do we fit it in just before Thanksgiving? Okay, so it sounds like we would get in for the holidays. It'd be tight. Looks like we'd get in.
It would be. I mean, but it's, it's putting you there in that holiday period. I, I think it'd be difficult.
I think we've got a methodology issue. You know, I wasn't really envisioning open space and ecology going through the whole document like line by line. I'm not sure what the charge was on that and I'd like to ask staff, did, you know, do we have a defined charge on that? Cause I mean, I, you know, we're big, almost doubling the time out of the gate. And I, and I, you understand, it's a long, long issue. Let me ask staff this. Yeah, yeah.
You look like you're looking amazing.
Well.
You can pass it to John, you're good at that.
Well, he passes it to Stuart, he's.
Yeah, but, but I think we did have a, a document that suggested an allocation of responsibility, which I believe John prepared, am I right?
Actually, that was the former city attorney, uh, it was Hal Topol.
Hal prepared that?
Yes, and that was in two thousand and, I'm going to say five, maybe, Clay, um, when this process was pretty early on. I, I, I might be looking for Stuart for some more current, I haven't referred to that very currently.
No, I thought we had much more recent than that. We had a staff report that suggested, because, you know, way back then, we weren't even talking about all these groups doing the kind of work that they're, they're doing. It was more recent and there was a table even, it was in a staff report. You know what I'm talking about?
Two thousand twelve.
Right.
I don't think your microphone's on here, Mike.
I think that, that, I do remember the staff report, I don't necessarily remember the content.
Right, but I think of it written by John, that's why, my recollection anyway, yeah.
I, I honestly don't have a recollection of what that particular work product was.
Cause we met together in a subcommittee and we were talking about, so what would the various committees and commissions, you know, what would they focus on? And there was a table of the different sections and so forth.
Yeah.
Um, which I think, Clark, that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm referring to, yeah, to that and, you know, and I certainly understand Michelle's point of, you know, everything being interconnected, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Is this something that, um, you want to try to redirect, that they don't have as much responsibility so they can get it done quicker? Is that our intentions?
Well, not necessarily saying that, is maybe instead of doing as a whole committee, you know, something like the citizens committee and breaking it up in two by twos or something like that and then coming together with what their specific findings are each, each one because, uh, you know, I have, uh, a great amount of respect for each of our committee members, that they do due diligence on, on, and I'm talking about the open space ecology because we've always gotten a good body of work from them. That's why I'm saying methodology. But also I want to know, you know, idea of what, you know, what we established because I wasn't really expecting them to go line by line through the, through the document, you know, and I appreciate, you know, where the rubber meets the road, you know, wanting to do that, but, uh, I'm, you know, coming out of the gate here, we're requesting to almost double the time, you know, within two months into this or a month and a half into this and it's like, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, the, the other thing, um, we also need to be.
I mean, I agree.
Yeah, you know, that we also need to recognize is just the amount of time that those members will have to take to study that document. And that, I mean, that's a big document. And granted, yeah, there's, you know, the people that are, the members of that committee are, are, you know, you know, very smart and, um, you know, can handle the, the document, but it does take a lot of time and, you know, there's that concern of perhaps, you know, burning them out as well. Um, you know, I, I've heard some, some issues and I, and, uh, you know, coming from some members and I, and so I, I think you're right, Clark, it's, I, I think it is about methodology. I mean, it has nothing to do with, you know, not having the committee, you know, look at the entire document, but how you, you look at it because, you know, looking at the amount of hours it's, that would be requested with the current methodology, it's, it's, it's very significant and, um, so. But I, yeah, I guess we're still waiting on what the council.
Do you find it?
I think your microphone's off, Clay.
Apologize for that. The staff report that I was thinking about, um, dealt with process issues, it did not deal with the, um.
Allocation.
Allocation. So I'm, I'm, did we possibly have that discussion when we created the citizens committee?
We did.
Okay, so if I can find that staff report, I think we might have something. I'm thinking that was last fall.
Because we had all these groups, we had the recreation commission, we had BB CAG, we had, uh, open space and ecology and anyway, the, what was interesting about that particular chart, and this is, um, probably, it was naive at the time that you say, okay, these are the chapters that really stand out as appropriate for open space and ecology and then there's the recreation chapter, so that's obviously the thing for, I mean, that's kind of set up initially. Uh, and then I've, uh, actually in the sustainability committee, we've had some reports from Glenn Fieldman and she was saying, well, that's all very nice and well, but the problem is that things get interconnected across chapters. And when you study something, I know she was giving the example of the noise mitigations and what was being proposed there was actually inconsistent with mitigations that were proposed in another chapter. Uh, and so the, the problem becomes, you know, where do you draw the line? Um, because of the interrelationship of things, that, that's the complexity. And so it's not, um, so easy to just delineate, okay, this is the chapter and you have to stick within that because they bleed over into each other because they're interactive. And so that's what Glenn Fieldman was pointing out at our meeting, remember that? Uh, and so though we did have this original allocation, Clark, uh, which seemed to make sense at the time, um, now we're running into the issue of, uh, interconnections across chapters.
Where the rubber meets the road.
Yeah, right, yeah, right. And that, that's what's, you know, taken the time to, to coordinate and the, and the thinking about it, at least that's what'd be my understanding. Any luck, John? Did you find it? In the meantime, Michelle.
So when we embarked on this, before we actually got the draft EIR, uh, we asked for that direction and we were given the memo that the council in two thousand and five had prepared and we read it and we have been following that. Also methodology wise, obviously we're not giving as much weight when we review, review a chapter like on cultural resources. We're looking for the interaction of cultural resources, where it interfaces with what we consider to be, you know, open space, ecology, you know, poisons, that kind of thing. Even something is what would seem not related to open space and ecology such as like soils, uh, seismicity and vibrations or whatever. And you talk about, you know, you're going to be drilling down through a landfill and releasing what, you know? So we, and then even with methodologies, like not, we're not going through everything line by line. I am personally, but as a committee, we're sort of going back and forth, we haven't really settled on exactly how we're going to do it because of our different understandings of what, how those will get addressed in the comments. Because if you just say, well, we don't like this or how, you know, you have to frame it as a question or as something that they can respond to. And so we're still working through, through some of that and actually the council liaison, I believe, has been invited to come back to the open space and ecology committee, right, Stuart? To speak to us about it.
Yes, I sent them an email this afternoon.
Oh, okay, well, we had decided that we do want to have your input on the scope of the work that we're doing. Um, and then my question to you as the council is if not us, then who? Who's going to review it at that level? Because it's become very obvious to me that it needs to be reviewed at that level and to make sure that we agree with the different methodologies and the different models and applications that they have applied to come to some of their conclusions. Um, and then their mitigations and their, uh, unmitigable, unmitigatable things. So there's a lot of questions and also who's going to cover what in terms of mitigation and what's really going to happen. So there is a lot of question and, and honestly, I'm not trying to prolong this and I don't think the committee's trying to prolong it, but I also, as many committee members do, have a full-time job that I am responsible to do and other activities in my life that I'm responsible to do. To actually read a chapter, even to give a overview summary, many of them take as long as two hours to read a simple chapter, especially if you go and actually follow through with the referrals to the other chapters or, God forbid, you should actually look at the appendix that backs it up. So it's, I'm sure we could gloss through it and just, you know, write a few comments or whatever, but is that really the work you want us to do or do you want us to, to really do the work that needs to be done on it? Cause otherwise, you know, I will go do it on my own and not spend time in the committee doing it because I think it needs to be done for the people of Brisbane and I think it's really important. But I would feel sad to do that because although I might know something or have a, a expertise in something or a memory of, of, why isn't that there? You know, you've got some very brilliant people on that committee who know so much about so many different things that doing it in the group setting where you can call on Glenn and say, you know, and her expertise in her areas and Mary and Eleanor and Sean and Kima and Barbara. And everybody brings something different and a different perspective to the table and questions different things. And it's not like we're looking for typos, even though we are mentioning them when we see them. So I don't think that our request is unreasonable and I don't, and we're not stalling, trust me on that. But do you want our full attention? Do you want us to do it, you know, at the level that it should be done? Because if you do, then that's, I think, what it is going to require. And, and also for the citizens committee to do it thoroughly as well and the people. I can't imagine an individual being able to read through the whole document and make salient comments on it in a given period of time.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Um, I was able to research with Stuart and Sherry's help. We did actually have a, um, report, aside from this two thousand and five report, I think with Sherry is handing out now, I have a report of December seventeenth, twenty twelve, okay, this is the one she's handing out. And what it speaks to is in the body of the report, um, there being, um, anticipated topics that the, that the, um, various boards and committees would be reviewing and, um, I'm still looking at the difference, trying to find the actual paragraph. There's another, um, there's another, I'm going to, I'm going to have a sidebar with Sherry real quickly, if you hang on one second, please. This is what I'm talking about. Excellent. I want this paragraph. Right here, advisor body, blah, blah, blah. Sherry will pull the report, but there's a report on that same date that speaks to, um, OSEC's areas of responsibility tend to be more expansive and less well-defined. At a minimum, it is anticipated OPEC or OSEC would focus on biological resources, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality, energy resources and sustainability. If the council wishes to provide further direction regarding the scope of their draft EIR review, it should consider doing so in advance of draft EIR publication. So that's not part of the report, Sherry, just, it's a separate report on that same agenda, she'll provide you a copy of that as well. So that's from the twelve seventeen council meeting as well. Um, and that's, I apologize for, uh, forgetting.
Shows you how much we remember right before the holidays.
Yes. And, um, you know, the, I'll check the minutes, but I don't believe there was any more formal direction provided, I'll do that right now though in real time.
That's, that's what you were referring to, I think.
This is what I was referring to, yeah. So really it kind of, I don't recall us extending anything different. And I certainly understand, you know, Michelle's point of view about things being interrelated, you know? And, uh, I don't disagree with that. But it comes down to, you know, it's a hundred and fifteen days, you know, coming out of the gate, you know, a reasonable period of time, you know, what, what do we want and how do we want to do it? And I, I still think it's a, a methodology. And I still think it's a methodology issue. Myself, I can see a committee breaking up into by twos and then coming together with what their findings are. And, you know, I, quite frankly, I don't agree with extending 115 days. I remember, I was the one purported doing the initial 120 days, and I don't think Terry or you or Ray were on the council at the time, and people were going, well, that's kind of long. I mean, you know, 90 days is reasonable, and then 120 days, and now we're looking at extending additional 115 days, I mean, what the request is, and I, I...
I don't know. I, I'm going to hate to be put under the gun when it's our turn to read this thing and make a decision and have our time curtailed because we should be able to get it done in a reasonable amount of time. Because, I mean, this is a huge, huge document. And as Michelle said, and Greg, it's going to have long-reaching impacts and consequences, whether we do it right or wrong. And, you know, the preparers of the EIR, or the draft EIR, have, you know, worked on it and taken it back, made changes, worked on it, taken it back, made changes, and it's taken them several years to get a document that they felt comfortable with. And so, asking for another 45 days or another 115 days for us to get the document right, I don't think is being unreasonable. And if the city attorney can comment on possible fallout, or is there a possibility of fallout as far as from the applicant? Or do we have problems with that if we find that we need the time?
I, I can't, of course, speak for the applicant, who may, may want to address the council separately, in terms of any impacts that the applicant may believe that the extension would, would put on, on their process with respect to the council and the city. If the council were to extend the period for the 115 days, again, that would be certainly a much longer extension than is the norm in SEQA review. There clearly was grounds for the initial unusual circumstances, and there continue to be unusual circumstances. I can't represent what the applicant, again, may, may do, but I believe that the council would be within their discretion if it were to find that there were unusual circumstances based on some of the discussions that have been had tonight and to extend it for that, that full period of time.
Thank you.
And Terry, let me clarify, I'm, I'm good with 45 days. 115, I'm, I'm a little eebie-jeebie about, to be honest, so...
Well, I, I, I understand your reluctance and that it does sound like we're giving a lot of time, but that November-December period is very difficult to count as full days. We certainly have, don't have full staff. We don't have full things going on during that period because of the holiday period. I mean, I'm not sure what we would pay our attendance, you know, during periods is for staffing, but it's, it always seems fairly low to me, and, and getting things done during that period is difficult, so...
Forty-five-day extension would take it right before Thanksgiving, so it really wouldn't be the holiday period.
It would.
Yeah.
I have a question for John, or, and Clay too. So, after the, the draft EIR deadline comes to pass, then, you know, the information will be compiled, and then the next document that, that will come out will be, is it another kind of summary, or is it a response to the comments of the draft EIR? And then, then there's another, is there another bite at the apple to make comments and things like that, so?
There's a response to the comments document, which is prepared, which is a compendium of all the comments that were made, and then the response to each of those comments. So, that's prepared in a document. If the, the comments have triggered any sort of need to revise text in the EIR, that's typically published at that point in time, modifications to the draft EIR document. And then, the next sort of formal opportunity, and again, there'd be a process question for the council to answer later, but that's when the planning commission engagement, when they're considering the draft EIR, the responses to comments, the comments and whatever changes have been made in response to those comments, that whole thing is called a final EIR. It's not final until the council certifies it, but there will be plenty of opportunities. There'll be a public hearing process tied to that. So, not only will the planning commission be able to weigh in on this body of work, including the draft EIR, but they'll also be taking public comment like they would in any other hearing about the information contained in this larger document, the response to comment document as well. So, there's always going to be another opportunity for the public to be involved before the planning commission makes a recommendation to you in terms of the certification or possible certification of the EIR.
Okay. And then, and then when we get the, the final EIR, and we have our, our sessions, I mean, there could be things in the document that we would like to get further clarification and greater study, correct? So, I mean, no door is closed until...
Finals draft. So, it's certified.
They certify a document.
So, okay, so just, just to make clear that, that any comments, or it says, you know, the door will be closed unless we do these, these actions, I just, you know, we have the final say, and there's, there'll be plenty of other opportunities, not only for, for the community, but for our commissions and committees to, to continue to, to weigh in.
The time to do the, from what I understand, the time to do the questioning of the data and the document is during the draft stage for the public. And that it shouldn't wait, I mean, to get the best document we can, it should come to the planning commission, the, the draft, along with the responses and the corrections if needed, should come to the planning commission and then on to us as best of document as it can be.
Yes.
With as much information tightened down and correct as it could. I mean, if it comes to the council where it's, where we feel it's inadequate and we're asking for revisions, that, that wouldn't be a good way for it to go down. It should be coming to us for consideration as the best document as it can be, I would think. And, you know, I have one question in the process. Is the, when it goes for, at the close of comment period, and it goes back to the authors for response, do they have a time period that they need to respond? Or is that an open time period for them to make the changes?
There's no statutory requirement under SEQA, and it's going to be a function of how many comments there are and the complexity of the comments, and if the comments trigger new analysis or additional analysis or whether, so, no, there won't be a fixed deadline for them to draft the responses.
So, there's really only deadlines for the people reviewing it at this stage, not for corrections triggered by that? Correct?
That's correct.
So, you know, their, their work or their review or revisions are based on the complexity of the questions in the document, whereas I think that our review of the document should also be based on the complexity.
Yeah, sure. And, you know, you know, I agree with you. I mean, I'd like to see the document, the final EIR come to me as clean as possible. But, you know, if I'm reading it and there's something that I don't like, I'm not going to trust all the folks that read it before. You know, I'm going to make, I'm going to make my comments to it, and I'm going to want, you know, it to be reviewed, you know, by, by the proper agencies or experts, whoever. You know, I think, you know, I, you know, we have our Open Space and Ecology liaisons subcommittee, which is, which is Ray and I. You know, and maybe, I, I think there, there maybe needs to be a, a meeting to kind of work out perhaps some of the chatter that's coming from some members of the committee and, and, and of course, the, the chair. And I, I think we could come to some kind of mutual understanding that, that helps. Hopefully, stays within that 45-day extension that I think all of us agree we are willing to do. So, just throwing that out there.
I'm Ania Miller, Chair of the Citizens Committee. I appreciate being able to add one more thing about the final stage before you certify the final EIR. And that has to do with what's happening around us, specifically in San Francisco, which has certified a huge EIR, project EIR, not a program EIR. It's a final project EIR for the Hunter's Point, Candlestick, Vis Valley, Slazo, all those projects that are huge, I mean, much, much bigger than ours. And their plans include some things, and they've been adopted, that will affect us and are in conflict with the plans that we are looking at. For instance, the Caltrain station. Already in the map published in 2009, they claim that that's, they put the station up in San Francisco, moving it to San Francisco. Our station, I mean, and, and now, the plans we're looking at, the station is where it is, or there has been a by-county study to maybe move it south, so that, but still in Brisbane, we're talking about the Caltrain station in Brisbane. They have accepted a plan and done an EIR that includes the Caltrain station in San Francisco. So, by the time you get to the final certification spot, there may be all kinds of other things too, like with the High Street rail and, and all that, all the things that may, may call for you to take another look. What is the project? What, what is the final year? Has, what does it have to cover? I'm just seeing the time coming, that you have to deal with something else than what's already been presented to you.
Absolutely right.
Jonathan Sharpe with UPC. And just, just briefly, as most of you know, UPC is a project sponsor for two of the EIRs that are certified and were recently mentioned, and neither of those studied the movement of the Caltrain station from Brisbane to San Francisco. That is on the record. But another, another comment I, I wanted to make regarding this, this item is that I believe it is a process question, and I, I would, again, like to maybe request that assistance from staff and/or an EIR consultant, professional assistance, really help with the order and organization of comments for these committees to actually perform the tasks that are before them. I, I, I think it would be very helpful to add some discipline to the process, to provide some assistance, some facilitated assistance, so that the groups can actually do what it is, they, they believe they are charged to do, and can provide the quality of comment that I think everybody's discussing here tonight. So, I once again reiterate that option with, especially with the, the time that has been invested thus far and the dollars that have been invested in these documents, that it wouldn't seem unreasonable to have some facilitation so those groups can, can meet those deadlines that, that I think are reasonable and already, already longer than is required by statute. Thank you.
So, Jonathan, with those, if we hire some facilitators to help the groups, would that be a part of the reimbursement process?
My, my understanding is, is that, that the EIR consultants that you've hired are under our reimbursement agreement, yes. And we would agree, we would agree to, to look at a change of service agreement for facilitation for those groups within the 120-day period.
But just within the 120 days?
I, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not in a, I'm not in a position to negotiate at the lecture...
No, I just wonder and reiterate what I thought you said.
But, but yes.
Okay.
But yes, it's under our reimbursement agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Within the 120 days. Okay. Mr. Block.
Brad Block, Brisbane resident. Just wanted to add that a group that I'm affiliated with, we actually met with ESA, which is the consultant that prepared the CIR. In fact, I think immediately after the presentation was made, dealing with the section that we're interested in, we tried to schedule a meeting with this consultant. It took about six weeks or so from the time we requested the meeting to take place till we actually, you know, were able to meet with the consultant. Following that, it actually raised a lot of very technical questions. This is a very technical document. So, we're actually at, at a position, we're a group of laypeople, but now we have to find technical people to actually understand the feedback we got. So, you know, we did meet with the consultant, we, we got more information. It's now opening up many more questions, and now we need to find, as I say, our own sort of experts to digest what we've been handed. So, you know, I, I guess what, the difference between the 115 and the 45, it's two months. I'm just personally wondering why, what's the hurry, you know? Maybe that's a loaded question, but, you know, it's my, my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Kind of have a question, too.
Well, perhaps we need to have our council liaison staff meet with OSEC and kind of take a look at that request. I don't, you know, I don't know, maybe even have the consultant there and see what kind of assistance they can, they can provide for that. I, you know, like I said, I'm good with 45 days, 115 out of the gate, I don't, I don't know, you know, because I think we've got to kind of look at that, you know? I'm, I'm not comfortable with that, you know, right at this point, you know? It's not like a hurry-up thing or anything like that. It's just, you know, you know, we have commitments that we do want to make and, and move process along. So, you know, it's, and I know it's not an easy issue, and we've, you know, got a lot of volunteers, everybody volunteers, you know, for that. So, I'd really like, like to take a look and have that batted around and see if there's another way we can come up with it, to see if we can meet the timeline or extend it within the 45-day period. And it may end up that we can't, may have to go further, but I'd really like to have some dialogue between OSEC, the subcommittee, staff, and, and maybe the consultant, because there might be interpretational issues on what we're looking at too, so...
How much of the draft EIR have each of you actually read? Have you read Chapter 3, the site description? Have you read anything in Chapter 4 yet? I think it would, if you haven't, I think it would really help you a lot to understand the magnitude of the challenges that we're facing. the magnitude of the challenges that we're facing in some of the areas that we find it to be, that I personally find it to be inadequate. So have you actually read even the site description in the draft EIR?
I haven't read any of it, Michelle.
Okay. So before you...
And I don't plan on reading any of it until next year, to be honest with you.
Then how can you understand what we're up against with reviewing it if you haven't?
I want to have our subcommittee have the dialogue, because I do trust you guys, you know, to do something, but to ask something 115 days out of the gate when we're not even 60 days into it, I got a issue...
Oh, I'm 60 days into it. I've been reading it and studying it, and that you haven't even cracked the book, and I find that in order for you to understand what we're up against, you should at least read the site description, Chapter 3. I really do. And just one of sections, 4A through O, or P, or whatever it goes to, so that you have some hands-on understanding of what your citizens are doing. Thank you.
I'm really comfortable with the liaison committee meeting. I would, without voting on this tonight, I think it would be nice for our committees have a reasonable assurance that they would have at least the 45 days, and that the liaison can meet with the committees and the citizen committee and see if the need is greater than the 45 days and make a decision when we come back at our next meeting. Would that be a compromise that we could deal with?
Yeah, I mean, I think...
I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the citizen committee is fine with the 45 days, because that's what they've requested, so I think we're covered there. You know, what Michelle brings up, you know, is the magnitude of the document, and that's the concern that I have for the OSEC members, and that's why I'd like to have that meeting, to see if there's a way that we can not put so much of a burden on all those volunteers, you know? And so, I know this letter is coming from the Open Space and Ecology Committee, but I'm hearing, you know, word from other members that it's very labor-intensive and it's difficult for them to handle all of it. And so, we've got to find some kind of balance, so...
Okay. Well, I would like to make one other comment, and, you know, I've sat in on some of the meetings so that I knew what was going on in different meetings, and to have the current people who wrote the EIR, the consultants, being the person who reviews or summarizes it, I think defeats part of the purpose. Although they do know the information, it's hard to be self-critical. And so, I think that to get your best bang from a person who's going to come in and help people understand flaws or peculiarities or different complex issues, it almost needs to be someone who is somewhat removed from the integrity of the document.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, you know, we may have to end up extending it further, but, you know, I think that conversation does need to take place and, you know, have some dialogue on, you know, what the expectations are, what we, you know, what we really do want, you know, feedback from the committee, you know, in the whole.
Ultimately, it's up to us to provide the direction for the committee. You're correct.
So Terry, you want to make a motion?
I thought we weren't going to make a motion. I mean, I would just like an assurance that, I mean, I think the committees would need the assurance that we would have at least 45 days, but I thought, well, you wanted more...
That's why I think it ought to be a motion. Because then you've got something on that, well, always ask the attorney question like that, but I think it would be better to have a motion?
Well, I think if the intent is to provide a 45-day extension, then it is necessary to make a formal motion and vote on that, to extend it by 45 days. Otherwise, there is nothing binding in terms of any extension.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I was giving Terry a chance, because she proposed it first.
Well, I just wanted our committee not to think that they didn't have those 45 days.
Right.
I would really be more comfortable with the longer time period. And I hate for it to make it sound that, oh, yeah, I'm fine with the 45 days, when I'm not sure I am.
Okay.
So...
But the caveat was that there would be this further conversation and...
Well, that's the liaison committee, so that they can find out if there's something else they can do to help.
Or, as Clark says, you know, maybe longer if it turns to be the outcome.
May ultimately end up being that, you know?
Is there, again, to city attorney, is there an issue if we make the 45 days and then come back in two weeks or a month and request the additional days?
Councilmember O'Connell, you would have the option prior to the expiration of whatever the final date is for review of the EIR, to reconsider, and again, if there was a finding of unusual circumstances, to extend it if the council in this discretion felt that was appropriate.
Okay. Okay, with that, I guess I will make the motion to extend the 45 days.
Second.
And with the understanding that there will be a meeting between the Liaison Committee and OSPEC to see how they're doing and see what further developments would be appropriate.
And that needs to happen soon.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Understanding, part of the motion, right?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any other, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may we take a short break?
I figured you could have mentioned that, since it seems like it's time.
Yes.
It does.
We will take a short break.